July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, Lee County Board of Supervisors Director Megan Doran, Mr. Roy Webb, Pastor Dr. Andrew Church of God, going to lead us in the indication.
Your help, Father, thank you for this privilege and opportunity to call upon your name. You said that we are to seek first the kingdom of God and His righteousness, and, Lord, that's what we do here today. I pray, Father, that you would guide these board supervisors, help them to make wise decisions, but we pray that you would just, Lord, enable this business meeting to be conducted in a way that's pleasing and acceptable on your side. Help us, Lord, in all that we say and all that we do to honor you. Lord, we pray, Father, for the blessings of Almighty God upon this service, upon Lee County, Virginia. We pray that you would prosper this county, and as this business meeting is conducted, Lord, we pray that, again, you would give divine wisdom, Lord, to this board of supervisors, and help those here that would speak, Lord, to speak in a way that's pleasing to you. You know all things, see all things, and hear all things, and may our hearts, Lord, be right with you, we pray, in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Israel, with liberty and justice for all.
Apartment reports, are they good things?
I didn't know if you wanted me to expound any on-
If you would, if you'd like to, like to-
On any of that, sure. Because I guess the report was in there as the item that I had delivered, and it's concerning, it's concerning the personnel cut to my office. I just, I guess, wanted to supply some more data and ask that that be reconsidered. Wanted to kind of sort of paint a picture and just help me to understand a little bit. But first, I guess I'll start with sort of how do we get, and I do have a handout here that I'll give each of you all, and I think I, I think I gave this to Mr. Kimball last, or several meetings ago, but this has localities throughout southwest Virginia, commissioners' offices, that the number of people that they have, how many are comp board funded, total number of deputies, how many are supplemented above the minimum, and I think you'll find that, that our office, which I updated this number today from four deputies to three from the numbers that I had before, but even at, at four, we were, we were staffed below what most other offices are. The only office that doesn't have any supplemented deputies besides ours is Dickinson County. They have five deputies, but only a population of thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty. We now have three deputies. Scott County, for instance, is the closest to us in population, their population's twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-three, ours is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five. They also have four deputies, with one of them being supplemented. One, I don't know, wanted to point out is that of all these listed, only Giles County also is a VADA site for income tax preparation, and that's a service that we provided, it was in place long before I became commissioner. But each year, we usually do around fourteen hundred federal and state tax returns. It is a program that is not mandated by the state, we do that as a service to our community. In doing that, over the last nine years, I've become involved with the Coalition of VADA, different sponsors throughout southwest Virginia, and we formed a VADA, a southwest Virginia VADA Coalition, and began applying for grants. This year, we thought we were going to get four thousand dollars in our grant, but actually walked the check, now I think it's fifty-three hundred when we received it last week, so we were pleasantly surprised we got additional money from the services that we provide. But in saying that, all these things are items that we will not be able to provide to our constituents moving forward with staff reduction. And in the letter that, that I had sent to Mr. Wright a few days ago, and if you had looked, had a chance to look through it, and I'll try to be brief, but in the last nine years, we've done over thirteen thousand federal income tax returns, thirteen thousand ninety-one, to be exact, and the IRS, they, they estimate that our efforts have saved Lee County citizens two hundred dollars per return, and we electronically file their state and federal income taxes. Over that period of time, that comes to two point six million dollars that Lee County, low-income people, that's predominantly who we serve, that qualify to participate in this, they get to keep two hundred dollars in their pocket, and, you know, that goes to buy groceries, that goes to put gas in the car, maybe buy the kids, you know, some clothes, pay electric bill. So, you know, I think it's very vital for that, but not only does that money not stay in the pockets of our citizens, we would also lose the grant money, and over the last nine years, that has been thirty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. The paper you have may say twenty-nine thousand, but that was before I added the thirteen hundred to it extra that we adopted the other day, so the new total's thirty-one thousand, three thirty-four, twenty-six. We've also affected July first, we went ahead and we eliminated our late Thursdays to certain constituents, so we may be the only office in the state that has done that, we've done that since February two thousand twelve, a month after I took office. We stay every Thursday until six-thirty, offering citizens that work a nine-to-five job, or for whatever reason, if they can't get there between eight-thirty and four-thirty, they could always come to our office on Thursdays until six-thirty, and it's been a very popular program, especially during busy times. But with minimal staff, we can't continue to offer that, because the way that I always administered that was typically you had four weeks in a month, I had four deputies, one of the deputies would rotate each week and stay late, I would then give that deputy the opportunity to leave two hours early on Friday, come in two hours late on Friday, something like that, so we can't pay overtime, but with one deputy, we can make that manage to offer that service. However, with fewer deputies, I just not want to ask my people to start staying two and three days a month, you know, I just don't think that's fair to them, but those are two things that will likely be leaving. But a little bit of history on, on how we got here, and, you know, things that we administer, I thought maybe everybody don't realize what all we do. But prior to twenty-twelve, prior to me coming to the office, Tommy Lexi served Commissioner Reddine for nearly twenty-eight years, and during his time as Commissioner, he had at least five deputies for many, if not all, of his time as Commissioner. Shortly before I was elected, one of the deputies moved to become the nine-one-one director, which left the office with four deputies. I was elected Commissioner Reddine in November two thousand eleven, took office January one of two thousand twelve. For my entire duration of the years I've served, for fourteen years, I've always had four deputies. I never did ask for that fifth deputy back out the gate, I never did. But the duties and workload has expanded greatly, and additionally, from two thousand twelve until July of twenty-three, we had two comp board funded deputies and two county funded deputies, although one of the county deputies, funded deputies, did have a comp board number, that was restored, and that was through our association logging the General Assembly to restore that funding, but that was restored back in July of twenty-three. So it's not been that long ago that the county was actually paying for two of my deputies instead of, you know, just one. But anyway, you know, during that time, the county had always picked those positions over funding them because they realized the importance of the office, the massive amount of work and revenue that this small office churns out. Each year, during my state budget request, I always asked the state for funding for one additional deputy in hopes to draw money down for the county. Additionally, I awarded two thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars of part-time money from the state, in which I normally draw down into the county-funded position to offset the cost of the county-funded employee. These funds cannot be drawn down to support a comp board funded employee, so I'll have to hire somebody just part-time to be able to access those funds. We've worked diligently in the last fourteen years to modernize the process of the office to allow us to work more efficiently due to our small staff size. Listed below are some of the more recent items we've accomplished or done to the best office we possibly can to serve citizens of Lee County. In two thousand thirteen, we went live with our public access to real estate assessment records. Before this access, we were constantly cringing and faxing and emailing property cards to banks, attorneys, realtors, insurance companies, et cetera. This greatly reduced the amount of labor and expense in paper, toner, wear and tear on equipment, and allowed better access to records for all of our dislocationes. In two thousand seventeen, we began working with the southwest Virginia VADA Coalition to apply for the grants I spoke about earlier. All this has been spent to purchase new desks, chairs, computers, printers, monitors, filing cabinets, et cetera, at very little cost to Lee County due to these grants. In two thousand eighteen, my chief deputy, Robin Blakemore, was awarded the most prestigious award a deputy can have in the Commissioners Association, she was awarded as the Margaret Anderson Deputy of the Year. This, this award recognizes Robin as one of the best deputies in the entire state. Later, actually at the same conference, twenty eighteen, I was awarded the President's Award by the Commissioner Reddine Association, because I was identified by the president at that time as an individual who worked tirelessly for our association, as well as the locality in which I serve. Also in two thousand eighteen, I earned the Certified Assessment Evidator designation, the CAE, from the International Association of Assessing Officers. To you all, this probably don't mean anything, but this is the highest designation an individual can receive in the world of property assessment. To this day, I'm the only commissioner that's ever had this designation in the state. I'm actually one of two real estate appraisers in the state, and one of three brokers, I have all three of those designations. We revamped and utilized technology to continue to assist our locality when we introduced our VADA site by appointment in two thousand twenty. When many places were shutting down, we figured out a way to keep serving our citizens. This practice became so popular that we now only do the returns by appointment. This eliminates a trip for the constituent as they get their taxes prepared and filed in one fifteen to twenty-minute stop, they don't have to worry about standing in line and making two trips to the courthouse like years before. In two thousand twenty-three, we launched the Lee County GIS mapping website, this has been running out of our, our office since its inception, and was worked on for many years before launching. Beginning with a map digitization project, it all started in two thousand thirteen, to now the fully interactive GIS map we have today, it took roughly ten years to accomplish. It serves multiple departments, but the base layer is and will always be the tax map parcel layer, which everything else is built upon. In two thousand twenty-four, I was elected by my peers as President of the Commissioners Association, a position I'll hold until September of this year. I'll still be on the executive board for another year as the immediate past president. To this day, I'm the only commissioner, and from what we can find, the only constitutional ever from Lee County, to be selected by his peers statewide to lead an association of constitutional officers. I may not have a ton of respect here, but I've got some yoke throughout the state. From two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-five, our office obtained certification as an accredited office. It's been designated since the inception of the program in two thousand nineteen. This recognizes that our office meets a rigorous standard that only the most accomplished offices reach. Getting into local taxes, in two thousand twenty-one, the board of supervisors adopted the food and beverage tax, and my office agreed to administer. These local taxes are things that we do not have to do, this is, we agreed to take that on, to help the county. We agreed to take that on, tax went into effect October first, two thousand twenty-one, the first remittance was due November twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. I didn't go all the way back to calculate that, but last year for calendar year two thousand twenty-four, that generated two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents in Lee County in food and beverage taxes. In July of twenty-three, my office again agreed to begin administering and processing transient occupancy returns, which is your lodging tax. Before that, it was solely just administered by the treasurer's office, but we urged the county to pass a new ordinance that would make it more uniform, like coal severance, the food and beverage, that we've set up a system to check some balances between the two offices so it was more uniform. The year prior to us doing that tax home, the county received two thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents in this tax. In two thousand twenty-four, the first full year of us processing and auditing, auditing these returns, our office collected seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents, which is an increase of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. So in two thousand twenty-four alone, just these two local option taxes brought in an additional two hundred and fifty-five thousand, six hundred and ten dollars and ninety-six cents to the county. There's also been rumors for years about the possibility of a cigarette tax relief in Lee County. Now, I'm not advocating a for or against that, but I'm sure if, if the county ever decides to implement that, it would be an under task asking for our office. Further adding to this workload, in June two thousand twenty-four, the board of supervisors voted to go to split billing for real estate taxes. This also creates more work for our office, however, I didn't ask for any additional employees, only to keep the number that I've had. These are all items that have been added over the last four years that bring additional revenue, as well as additional work. In addition to these items, we also maintain the real estate tax rule, we pick up all the new construction, which many localities contract that out, they don't do that in office, which saves money. We administer a veterans tax relief program, elderly disabled, fire and rescue tax relief, personal property taxes, business property taxes, machinery and tool taxes, merchant capital, coal and gas services, mineral under development taxes, bank franchise taxes, state income tax returns when we process estimated tax payments. From our two thousand twenty-four data, we maintain the records of ownership of nearly twenty-one thousand real estate parcels. This includes, last year we done seventeen hundred and thirty-eight property transfers, as well as processing eight hundred and twelve elderly and disabled tax relief applications. We additionally processed two hundred and nine disabled veteran tax relief accounts, and that's just real estate, not counting the personal property. The real estate tax relief amounts for just these two programs are over two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars for two thousand twenty-four. We also conducted almost twenty-seven thousand, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six personal property assessments, not to mention business property accounts. I hope you can see the importance of the work we do and the great pride that we take in, in the work and serving citizens of Lee County. However, with the recent staff reduction, we will have to cut these services that we've provided for many years. I humbly ask that you consider the impact that this decision will not only have on my office, but on our community as a whole. And do you all have any questions or anything that I can, that I can answer?
Oh, the new property assessment, what is, do you all have to go and put this into your files, and is, what is, what is that process right there? And is it up to them?
The new property assessment, which that's nothing that we conduct, I didn't have a vote in hiring people, most advice I was, I've given has been, you know, discredited or not considered in regards to that over the last several years, going back to twenty-two. The only advice I gave was to not hire bright minds, and that's the company board at that time hired. So, you know, I, I continually feel like that I'm at the spot where I can't ever complain over things that I have no vote, no say, and what advice I give isn't even considered or adhered to. So it's very frustrating for me, but I will speak to, to your point. The, the assessor appeals were all input by the, the assessor, the BOE order, and that's something I didn't even put in here, we've had, I think, right at eleven hundred of those, we've been working on for the last week and a half trying to input to our system. Once the BOE finalized, they did give those orders to us, and we're working on getting those in.
Okay, that's what I was, that's what I was.
Yeah, but that's something that, yeah, we have in the kingdom of here. Well, if you all have questions, I guess I do have a question for you all, and maybe you all can explain it to me while I could, couple of questions. Are there any other departments within this courthouse that have, had a staff reduction inside mine?
Up to my door.
Is there any other office in here that generates revenue? Do you all need one?
Yes.
Well, I don't know, I'm not sure it's not in the drawer, but I don't know that, that that's the first place I'd start to look to cut it. I mean, that's just my opinion.
So, obviously, it's not, you mentioned respecting this board, I respect you highly in what you do and what you have done. The decision I made not to do this, one, is to try to get fully comp board funded, like every other office in, in this building.
Well, but the problem is with comp board funding, the treasurer's office and the commissioner's office are comp board supported at fifty percent, other than the officers. Nate and I are both paid about ninety percent of our salaries by the state.
Yeah, but your, his employees are fully comp board funded too.
And he has only become comp board funded in July of twenty-three because of the efforts that, that our associations have made throughout the state to get that funding restored.
So why does Dickinson County have five fully comp board funded people with thirteen thousand?
It's based on the workload study, but one reason is, and same way with Dickinson, or, I'm sorry, Buchanan, if you look at those localities, they don't have a ton of people, but like Dickinson has seven, one reason, or Buchanan has seven, one reason is that those two localities have a tremendous amount of mineral accounts. Buchanan County in itself probably has ten thousand gas wells, you know, here we have about sixty-five in comparison. So, you know, the, the duties are based upon what you're handling. Also, several years ago, back in the mid-two thousands, the state was going through a budget reduction, and it was actually up to the officers at that time as to how they decided to administer it. Like, say, Dickinson and Buchanan, for instance, they may have chosen to partially defund multiple positions, so instead of completely eliminating funding, like, we have one comp board position that was completely eliminated until two thousand twenty-three, the funding, they get a partial reduction on like, say, four positions. Okay, when the state restored that funding back in twenty-three, they got it all back in, all of them that were cut, we only got it back in that one that was wholly cut. So I think that's part of the reason, was how the decision was made at that time, how to do the reduction, but part of it is, while population base is a big part of it, it's also got to do with your workload, and Buchanan and Dickinson both have a tremendous amount of mineral.
And my next question, as far as your late Thursdays, couldn't the, the whole schedule be adjusted to go ahead and accommodate that either way?
Well, not without-
Couldn't everybody in your office come in too early late, stay too early late one day?
You mean, have the whole office come in late?
Sure. If, if, if it's about accommodating the people, couldn't that schedule be adjusted either way?
Well, it is up to me, I mean, we could actually work four days and take Friday off if we wanted to, but I don't know if that best serves the public, that's up to me.
Or you could work, I mean, you could adjust that schedule if you want to continue to provide that to the public.
Well, maybe, but it's very difficult to do when you have four, typically four weeks in a month, four Thursdays, occasionally we have a fifth Thursday, but it was much easier to ask one person to stay late one Thursday a month than to, you know, have, have a schedule planned out like that. It also makes it more difficult when you have people, you know, if they're sick, they're off, when you're already short, and the state already said we were one person short before this cut, so-
It leaves you pumped.
When you're on. Well, I think the other thing is, they do fund all the courts, clerk's office, comp board, attorney, and the sheriff's office, they don't fund hours because that's where the locality gets their money, and we don't think they need you all to have a little skin in the game, you know, that's where you get your cash, maybe you should provide a little money for it.
So for, obviously, it's your decision, your schedule. So for the next thing was income tax. Is it mandated that, that you have to do state income tax regardless?
We do have, we do have to do state income tax, that is correct, but not federal.
Correct.
But we done, you typically have to do the federal to get to the state, so we do have some people that will file, say, TurboTax, and they're federal, and they'll bring their state to us, there's not many of them, probably less than a hundred. Most people bring both to us that qualify for the VADA program, and we do the federal and the state so we can defile all of that for them at one time for free. Which, one thing that will probably be a cost to the county is we will have to purchase software through the VADA program, they, they give us our software to do, our tax layer software to do the tax returns.
Last but not least for me, and one of the decisions, or one of the things why I decided to not vote for it, was because we were told the last employee spent a lot of time in the hallway and wasn't working, just to be frank.
I don't really know who told you that, but I would think it would probably be best to ask their supervisor whether they need that employee or not, you know, I can say, I hear you don't do much at Black Rock Trust, does that make it true? I mean, I don't represent-
Black Rock Trust has nothing to do with this.
Well, no, it doesn't, but I would rather come and talk to you. I mean, I'm just telling you-
Just giving you my reasons, you ask, and it's not about respect.
Well, maybe you can explain how sharp you got your pencil on this, because I do have one more question. Tell me about it.
And I can, I voted against the tax increase and the budget, so I really probably don't even have a say in it at this point, I'm just telling you my reasons.
No, no, I mean, this is for the whole board. But before, let's just go back in time, three or four months ago, we had a gentleman that was doing nine-one-one mapping and IT, we had a nine-one-one director-
I'm talking about that stuff.
And we had GIS real estate clerk, which is, and my office was comp board funded. So we had two county positions, one that was supplemented by the county, but it did have comp board funding. But now I recently saw that you're advertising for a nine-one-one director, and you're advertising for an IT person, and you're taking the GIS guy out of my office to combine with the nine-one-one, so it, best I configured, that goes from two county funded to three county funded positions. Is that, I mean, my pens aren't that sharp, but is that not correct? But if you're all upset about county funded positions, why are you raking my office to take it somewhere else? Because I'm cut a position, I'm losing my real estate clerk, so I'm going for four employees with experience to two with experience, and all I can hire one back. I guess that's my question.
I just want to make clear, I didn't vote against it, I voted for your decision.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it. But I mean, I'd just like that explained to you. First, nobody else in this office in this building got cut, but yet we're all getting hacked up and wedded, I, I would just like that explained to me, and let, if it's, I mean, it's hard not to take it personally, very hard, I'll just tell you.
I don't think there's anything, Chris, against you personally, it's not with me, I mean, you probably know how I voted, and they probably, I mean, I mean, I, but, no, it's nothing personally, I, with me anyway, I mean, I enjoyed our conversation we had back there, and I learned, I learned a lot, so.
But, I mean, I, you know, I, well, and the thing is, I, you know, because I'm not the Facebook warrior, that's not me, I come to meet with you all each individually, talk to you, I talked to baby on the phone, but I, I called her, said face-to-face. I didn't incite a riot to bring down the air to get my way, I tried to do things respectfully, but how did I find out? My employee got pet through a Facebook post, that's how I really found out it was a breach, not a call, hey, we're not going to be able to do that. I mean, you want to go back to personnel last year at two o'clock, how I got called down the hall and say, oh, yeah, the person that just put in the resignation, you're getting her in higher, by the way, we're not going to find that position, I had to beg and plead, and luckily, they got their position back, I mean, you won't talk about lack of respect. I mean, the same hook said, I am upset, and I'll just tell you, I, I mean, I'll work as hard as I can, but I'm going to come and tell you right to your face, I'm not going to go behind a keyboard, I'm not going to do that, I'll come and tell you to your face. I tried to come and speak to all of you all individually, and you all, you have the purse strings, you do, you have that power, but I just ask for you to consider what all this will affect. We're probably going to be much later getting our books out this year because of this. We have till September twenty-fifth to make code requirements, I don't know if we'll make it or not, but on the backside of that, the tax date, which I asked for June the other December bid, but we had to stay with, because Wise County does, we had to stay May thirty-one, October thirty-one. but we had to stay with, because Wise County does, we had to stay May thirty-one, October thirty-one. I don't know. I mean, it's going to be tough to turn it around, it is, with one person short. I mean, we not even began to work on the tax relief applications. Normally, we have our letters out by the end of this month. I mean, we're working on BOE stuff.
Is that two hundred dollars?
And we send letters to everybody what they're awarded, but, you know, that's not even taken into consideration, I was split dealing, but, I mean, it's all accumulative thing, and I just want to come and just ask you all to reconsider that. I did run an ad to hire the one deputy that is comp board funded. I did put a pay range in there in the event that y'all decided to reappropriate money. I'm just talking about, I'm not going to talk now, I should have brought a bottle of water with me. But-
Would you like to go? Here you go.
So, yeah, something to be great. I didn't mean to come hijack your meeting, but, but I don't know that he said, she said, whatever, I'll just come and take it straight, and that way, it's on the record.
Chris, as I spoke, you know, I voted in favor of keep your employee, and I didn't even realize that you were getting that much in those grants to help out with those tax returns. I didn't even realize that.
Well, that's a-
That's a positive, also a positive for me to, you know, to make me feel better about knowing I did some-
Well, actually, that made us figure that in a way, because we don't ever have to buy equipment for that office.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I didn't realize that.
And that's part of us doing that is, you know, the offset that, that cost, but we just can't, I mean, we can't do it. And you look at the list of the localities, I mean, we already have fewer people than, all of them on there, I think, except Grayson. I think their population's fifteen, sixteen thousand, but they're on the vital side. I mean, we do over fourteen hundred tax returns a year. So you take that, and I mean, that's probably two thousand people, because a lot of those are joint tax returns that you're, that affects. But anyways, thank you for your time, I didn't mean to hijack your meeting, but I got behind the bull pit and didn't stop. Preacher, what's laid on my heart, hey?
For each other.
Yeah, thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Preachers report, everybody send in. Up to the floor for public expression.
Tom and Jason Spears, I'm the chairman of the weekend airport. So we've got an event we're working on, it's in the planning days, and just wanted to inform the board what we want to do. And I gave a draft, a little flyer there, if you got to pass around, I couldn't get it printed on anymore. But we'll do something similar to what they're doing there, show a movie on the parking lot there, to rent at the airport off the side. Kind of make some preliminary contact with some of the schools, get the football teams. I've talked to some of the lead high people, Scott Taylor, another member, he's on top of some of the Thomas Walker. And is it the school kids, the football team, or something? And do something, it's not a, I don't want to see anything that's for profit. I want to see something go to either the rescue squad or school sports, or something of that nature. I just want to see what your office input was and thoughts. And again, this is very much in the infancy of planning. Sunday is when Deanna found it on Facebook, she said, hey, you need to do this. Well, I sent a picture to some of the board members at county, flew from that from Sunday afternoon. We're, we've got the information on what we need to do for the licensing, to show the movie. That's going to cost six hundred fifty dollars, but we've got, we're working on a way to do that, it's not going to cost anything. And no admission, free admission for everybody to kind of bring a chair, fly in, drive in, and bring a chair or something out, which-
Jason, are you planning on having any food trucks down there?
If, like the rescue squad, Jones Rescue Squad, I know, has a food truck, and that type, somebody EMS or schools selling food, popcorns and stuff. I don't want to see, I want to see something that's done to do good for the county, I don't want-
Well, we generate money off of that too. Any food sold out those food trucks, we generate food tax.
Well, I understand that.
That's money coming to the county, that's what I asked, I mean.
My, and my, the way I envision it is more that something that the football team, or the cheerleaders, or the rescue squad, would money go straight to them instead of necessarily to, as a profit business, doing food truck. And I guess if those people wasn't interested, then we would invite some food trucks to come that would generate something. I think, I think I want to see something that does to a nonprofit to begin with.
So you're looking at something just to benefit football boosters or?
Yeah. And this is, like I say, this is very much in the beginning, you know, the football boosters sell popcorn, cheerleaders can do like snow cones, and then the rescue squad, where if they have their trailer, they could sell hot dogs and such. And I want to see both, both schools, both high schools do it, and whatever they make, provide it for profit and go with that. And the same movie they're talking about, thinking of seeing, it'd kind of be neat to be on the, out near the runway.
You're saying it costs six hundred fifty dollars to get a permit?
To get the, to get the license, to show the movie, that's what the movie costs.
You're asking for us, that from us, or?
No, no, I just wanted to know if you all had any input, if you was for or against it, or?
I'm all about it, I'm trying to have airport a bin already, obviously, so.
I might see something going on about her more than once a month.
And I think, and of course, it's kind of late, and you know, this is kind of, might be our only shot to do that this year, but that, I think if it works, that we could do this, have something more. But Roger, if you're involved here, six hundred fifty dollars, we'll take it.
I don't know if he's going to come out of our fund or you're always budgeting. Bad case of stutter there.
We'll, we'll take, we'll get it. Actually, I have one organization that has made it one sponsor. And I'm, and that's kind of, I don't want to say much about that yet, but-
Right.
But no, I'm not asking for no one, just kind of asking for blessing, input, attendance.
I mean, I'm all for the citizens getting used to the airport, I mean.
Well, then, but one thing I am asking from, for you all, is that other fly-ins we've had, we've done a reduced rate on, a discount on fuel purchases. And what we did before, was it twenty-five cents?
I thought it was twenty, but it could have been twenty-five.
Anyway, whatever it was, and I've slept since the last time I've been, and I'd like to do a, for the one day, do a reduced fuel price, and then, you know, Sunday morning, it go back to-
Yeah, I agree, that's a good idea, so.
And that's the way I want, in my mind, and I'm not the advertising guy, but I want to say kind of a drive-in, fly-in, bring your chair, and it would be probably, as you come through the gate, off to the left in the gravel area, going to bring one of the truck trailers from Mount Empire with a box trailer to hang the screen off of. So that's truck to truck, I can get easily.
I'm good with it.
All right.
Thank you all.
No. They, they actually have the authority to do that, they were just trying to make sure everybody was good with it.
I don't want y'all reading it on Facebook. I agree with that. I see a watch that on Facebook.
It's on Facebook, you have reports and recommendations of board. Can you do it?
Awesome. What has things going at the tower at Blackwater? Any more news?
I sent you an email.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, since then.
I have heard of that since then, so hopefully, they'll get, they'll get something working on that.
Well, there's no problem. Go ahead. No service?
No service.
It's been about six weeks. The Sail Tower?
Yeah. Yeah, so I sent an email off to the AT&T folks to get them to look into it and see what's going on.
I got a call from somebody out there.
I got an email back from the first one that said that they didn't know what I was talking about, but then finally, the, what's her name, April, sent an email back, and then went-
Did you talk, did you talk to Scott County?
I have not, they were, April said, it's April, I'm pretty sure that's her name, she said that she would get with them and coordinate something.
I'll call them in the morning.
Yeah.
Because I kind of feel responsible for all of them since I kind of spearheaded them, but if you wish, you would have let me know that any time you have a problem for them to address.
Well, I-
He, well, he told me, and, and, and you know, had all his contacts, a lot of stories.
Lisa H. Smith, or whatever, that's, she was with AT&T. And this is, I know we tweaked our scare, our scheduling stuff. What about, I see we've got people in the audience here, what if we got them in here and spoke, and could get them all out of here quicker during the meeting? I mean, what's everybody else's thought on that?
Do you want me to delegate?
Well, I see these people back here that's, that's-
I think he's talking about the delegation.
I'm giving a big grin back there. And work him up toward the front of the next time, and- Well, the chairman can do that, and he, uh-
Yeah, I don't kind of, I'm good with moving them in front of public expressions, if we want to do that in future.
I mean, you can leave them, you can leave them scheduled as they are, and like, if you wanted to have, if you wanted to book them up, things like that. My thoughts would just be accommodate these people, because there's not too many places to stay if they're traveling away. They might be traveling away. And that's what we usually like to do, is if we got somebody that's having to travel, is try to get them in and out here quick.
What, what you would need to do is take a motion or a vote to amend the agenda, to move them forward. But, I mean, that's, that's all it would take.
Oh, I make a motion, we do that?
Well, if, if we're doing that, can we do one thing? If we're going ahead and doing that, because really what we've got is, is, one is under new business, it's the, it's the Black Lives Support Resolution, it's under our packet, and then we could go ahead and get the delegation. Two, if you just go ahead and make that motion to do that, we could just go ahead and move them and the driving clinic in Magnolia Healthcare up and just, under one thing, if you wanted to do that.
Let's finish reports and recommendations of boards as we started that.
Okay.
I don't have anything.
Copy.
You good? County attorney's not present? How much you got?
I'm, I'm gonna be there, so.
I'll make a motion to move, amend the agenda to move the delegations up to the next topic we just, we just picked up.
And move the one-
End the Black Lung.
Yeah, and the new business item C, if we can get in that same motion, that, that we go ahead and get them out.
Our delegation, driving clinic, and Magnolia Healthcare project, Mr. Robby Turner, and new business number C. Let us see.
You need out?
A motion second, I'll vote. Vote.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I think it is important to recognize the support that I've gotten from the community as far as just very frank and candid conversation about what their needs are. And what we have put together over the past almost four years, it's taken to get to this point. The last time I was before the, before this board, it was about almost four years ago. And we hadn't, it was, it was an idea that we wanted to do. And now we have moved into a place where we have been able to get all of our federal and state clearances from the DEQ to FEMA, straight through the governor's office, down to the vicinity. And what we have been able to put together is a project that addresses some basic issues that, as, as commissioners, you know, that sometimes the community doesn't really understand. And one of those is revenue. And does a project make money for the county? And does a project, will it do good for the, for the county? There's currently a substance abuse disorder clinic in Marion, and they're having issues with getting their clearances. And that's because three years ago, it looked good. But when it came down to how it was going to function, the chickens have come home to roost, and they're having some issues. And we don't have those issues with this project. This project so far has spent over one point seven million dollars of private money to get to this place before I've even come for you to see what we can do to help us get to that place. Delegate Kilgore and State Senator Pillion met with me three years ago at the governor's office, well, at the Delegate Kilgore's office, to discuss this project. And Delegate Kilgore was actually able to have, could say, was able to have Mr. Little, who is now the chairman of the, is the governor's chief of staff, at the meeting, and what we wanted to do. And now I'm here to tell you that we have put together a project that has started to take shape, and what we are prepared to do, and what we're doing going forward. One hundred percent of our contractors are all local, licensed, and insured. That was one of the things that, one of the requirements that I insisted that would be done here. I wanted them licensed, and I wanted them insured, because I understand what that means for, to have a class B contractor. It, it costs money, it also raises revenue for them to do that. This project addresses, as you see here, this building, nothing in this, nothing in southwest Virginia looks like what we're prepared to build. Nothing. And there was a reason for that, because whether, there are some who do not understand what's coming, but there's a casino up the road. That casino is going to make driving and make Lee County a bedroom community. Some don't like that, but that's what's going to happen. I'm saying, and I'm petitioning, that this county needs to get ahead of the curve. Instead of sitting and waiting for something to happen to you, let's be, let's make something happen for us. Now, this project was designed to make this area- Now, this project was designed to make this area attractive to those who would like to spend, would like to spend some money and send their children or their family members to a substance use disorder facility. But maybe they don't want to, they're tired of spending a hundred thousand dollars a month for their, for their relatives. Maybe they would like to spend maybe thirty, fifteen, twenty, but they want it to look nice. It's unfortunate that this county is known for the Netflix movie a- a- about substance abuse, and then there's nothing here to address substance use disorder. I, I do know, and I've been speaking to medical tourism companies who would love to use the airport that is here to have people fly their planes in, drop off their family members quietly, get into this facility where no one will know that they're there because the one thing about Lee County, you have to come to Lee County to get to Lee County. You just don't exit, you just don't get on ninety-five and say, oh, I ran into, I ran into it. No, no, no. If you're in Lee County, it's because you're choosing to come here. The advantage of that is that it's a place where people who want their family members to hide will come here because there's no press. It's, it's a very quiet, and people mind their business, and it works for them. That was part of the plan to, for, for this facility. One of the things that we are doing here, which is, we wanted to take advantage of the community's look as far as the mountains, the air, and the view, and the views, which you can see, which we have done. And I have all of this on, I sent you all a digital copy of it all. But I think what really, the meat to the bones of this issue is what we're doing here. It's a fifty-two bed ASAM, American Society for, for, uh, American Social for Medical, for Medical Assistance for Drug Abuse. It's an ASAM three-point-three, three-point-five facility. Adult, male, female facility. This facility also has ten beds that were designed specifically for forensic residents. Those who are, who are locked up, who are in jail. Because the one thing that I've been hearing since I started this project was the cost of sending of someone across the state means that, and maybe I'm wrong. But what I generally hear is that we have to send a male and a female and their own overtime officers from the moment they leave to the moment they get back. It doesn't make any sense. When we, when I have a building that is ready to go, that has, that has a special use permits, is designed, and we have ten beds for, which will allow police to watch the, the, their inmates in the facility, and I, you can just do the math, what we will be saving as a community on the police having to leave and send them somewhere else. And it, and it is, it is ASAM certified, all of this. In fact, our physician who is doing this was picked by the governor to write and to, and to write and to redesign the forensic procedures for, for this, for the Commonwealth of Virginia. He's our physician. I think that we are at a place where we have to become the heroes that we're looking for. And all I'm asking is to, a path, tell me what I need to do to be able to partner with the county to get the money that is available under the opioid abatement act that everyone touted and was happy, oh, there's four hundred million there, there's two hundred million there, there's a hundred million here, and state by state you find that, well, there's no way to get the money. But it's there. You read the stories about, well, the county is taking money and they've done this with it because there was nothing else to build and they've done that with it. I don't know. I don't know. But what I do know is that there is not a project in southwest Virginia that is more shovel-ready than this project. The fact that we have purchased that property means that Stone Mountain Health Clinic moved into, moved, moved into Jonesville. So they took a bank that was empty and now they're using that for their IT department. So what does that mean for the town, for the county? Oh, wow, we got a, we don't have an empty building anymore. Tax revenue. What does it mean for this project? Well, four sixty-eight driving loop is, is, will, will be occupied. Then we took the bill, the bank that Stone Mountain Health had, and it was the Lee Bank Building, and we've been converting that to a doctor's office. Why? Not because we needed a doctor's office, but because it was there. And as I've been here for the past four years, I've recognized just a very annoying fact. I run into people who need, who have cancer treatments, who have blood disorders, and they have to go to Norton or they have to go to Kingsport, Tennessee to get treatment. Why is it that if you're on chemo, you have to get the car, throw up, get to, get your chemo, get another car, come home, throw up, when you could come right in your own community, like they do in other places in Virginia, and get their service done? But Ballard Health has four IV therapy clinics within five miles of each other. Why? Big hospital there, but they haven't put anything in the building. So I stopped looking for someone else to do something for us and we can do it for ourselves. So I convinced the developer, Mr. Herman, let me get that building because we need it anyway. Let me take that building and I'll open a doctor's office here. And in that doctor's office, we will have three exam rooms and IV therapy clinic with four chairs for someone who needs IV therapy. And we will also have a, a conference room that will be open in the evening hours for people who have gambling addiction, sexual addiction, smoking addiction, where they can come in the evening hours and they can have group sessions and group therapy there. The best part about that building is that it was empty and it was just sitting here gathering dust. It's not gathering dust anymore. It has fiber and it has redundant fiber. It is the only hospital in this region that has redundant fiber optic cable. On one hand, what does that really mean? Well, it means that I'm able to go and get through, I'm able to go get broadband funding that's supposed to be available for the federal government for healthcare. So now the county is able to tap into some of that money for those projects because before it was, well, if you guys don't have the fiber that's necessary, the fiber backbone. Well, now we have a building with the fiber backbone. Only us in the hospital are the only places that have the redundant fiber. I think that if, as far as, it's a, it's a healthcare clinic in the area, that's it. And that building, and that building is a hurricane and a tornado shelter. So we, we picked a very good building to do that, but it will not be an empty building or an eyesore. Driving will finally have a doctor's office in that area. Because what we don't want it to become, I hope it doesn't, is what happens, was happening in St. Charles. So all I'm asking is for someone to please give me the guidance necessary so that I can convince you that this is a project that makes sense for your board to get behind so that we can start getting that income that's sitting around. Sit, I mean, there was a, there was a meeting with, there was a meeting discussing, oh, we need, um, substance use disorder clinic in, in, in Pennington. We, we, we need it in Lee County. You have it in Lee County. No one else has come to you and said, well, you know, we're gonna give you ten, we're gonna give you ten rooms for forensic people. I was just across the street, I was just across the hall telling the parole, the woman who runs the parole system, well, you know, at our doctor's office, if they get referred from you, they can come get your analysis and their blood work for free. Be, because it makes sense to do that. It just makes sense. I'm not looking for anyone to do anything for us. I'm saying, let's partner, put our, put our, roll up our sleeves and let's do it together. It, it, it's very simple. You know where the money is. I'm told where the money is, but there's always a reason why it can't be done.
I'll answer that question real quick for you.
Yes, sir.
There's, um, and I'm up here from the program. Opioid Abatement, there's three buckets of money that come, that's available. One is direct and the other two are grant. Lee County, uh, with the direct money that, that comes in, actually all of that money, with the exception of very few dollars, has been allocated to, to do what we call our works program, which is a, um, it's, it's not this, basically, but, um, there is various and sundry things that happen that helps people not be in jail, um, do their community service, work off their fines, that sort of thing. It's a program that the county supported, that's supported for several years. And that's what we've got, the direct money applied to, okay? And the way that money is done, when those lawsuits and stuff come in, there was a little bit of money and then there was a pretty good chunk of money come in for a couple of years and then it dwindled back off. And that money comes from the opioid abatement authority, I think through 2039 is, is what that does. And, um, they've got all the money that's, that's projected to be out there. And the way that money is spent in the works program, um, and stuff I put together, actually it's only been a few months ago, we can fund that works program that is a county program through 2039. And there's another set of money that is sitting there that is, uh, grant funded through the opioid abatement authority. I actually have been working with, and I'm up here familiar with, like Sandy Odile?
Yes.
Okay? And she was putting together some stuff for me so that we could have an application process for any organization that, that had what they felt like was a worthwhile project for opioid abatement so that they could apply for that money from the county. And then the county would go after the grant money so that we had some assurances of where that money was being spent and, and that sort of thing. Because there's, the, the third bucket of money is you can get to an extra set of grant funds that if you're, what is called a gold standard, and that is one hundred percent of the opioid abatement money that you use is toward opioid abatement and you're not using any of that for administration, cost, and, and that sort of thing. If you're a gold standard, then you can go after an extra bucket of, of, a lot smaller bucket. But you can go after that and it's, um, and it's more competitive. So as far as, as doing that, if you're looking for funding, you would need to get with me and let me give you the application to go after, you know, some of the, the grant funding to the OA, um, or the, yeah, OA, um, so that we can do those applications to see if they, you know, if, if they're applicable and we can get awarded those funds. That, that is exactly how that would work.
And, and I, I spoke to you and we, um, it was really cool, speaking to you, it was really good. But I'm, I'm honestly here because I'm ready to do what you need me to do.
Okay, but really then all it would take would be, you know, give me a couple of weeks or schedule an appointment and get with venue and Sandy and say, gonna talk about it.
Yeah, but I wanted, I wanted the, the board to see.
Yo, sure.
Exactly what we're going to put. It is a fifty-two bed ASAM twenty-four hour male, female, adult substance use disorder facility. That means no more traveling across state for a police officer. No more Virginia tax dollars going to Tennessee when they can, when they can stay here. It means that we will bring more people to the community. Those who have means and those who don't have means to come here and, and, and put life into this area. I opened this place. That means that the, the Driving Grocery will have to open up in the breakfast, in the breakfast hours because those people will need, will need to eat something. It's something as simple as that, but they open at nine AM. Well, when my doctor's office opens, those people who are there for the, who are there for IV treatment, they're gonna be getting, they're gonna be needing services at eight o'clock in the morning. So that's going to generate more, that's going to generate more people. The Patel family who wants to open the hotel needs, we need to be able to show them, this is the type of project that's coming. Because if I have fifty-two beds, that means, let's say, ten percent of those people are going to have family members who are going to need somewhere to stay. Where do we want them to stay?
Lee County.
Exactly. If we want them in Lee County, we need to get someone here to build something in Lee County. And that, and I've heard the stories about that. It's gonna be nice. But nothing is going to compare to what we're doing. And when we put something like this out in the, in the, in the air and people see that it's happening, right now, the doctor's office that we're doing right now, I have more people calling me and asking me, when is it going to be built? Because my mother needs, needs chemotherapy. I'm tired of having to go forty or fifty miles away. And, and what we're doing here is, is amazing just by simply doing a doctor's office. And that, and, and, and it was just something, it was an afterthought because I needed the, I needed the land because the op, the Department of Environmental Quality told me, you're disturbing too much soil. So if you're gonna dig up that much soil, you need to put two ponds in the back. So what am I gonna do? I'm gonna fill the ponds with catfish and maybe some tilapia or something else. And then we'll have the boy scouts, we'll have the seniors, and they can go sit there and, and, and fish. Why pay forty-five thousand dollars just to have it ran with, uh, these chemicals that can go in there to keep it when we can just put some catfish, some cat weeds up here, cattails? Everything starts to be, starts to pile on one of, on top of each other. But no, we don't have to wait for someone else to come do this. I'm saying we can do it ourselves. And I'm very, very, very excited that we have, we will be able to have the forensic people in this building. That our people will not have to travel four to five hours, six hours, to go take somebody to, to get a bed. When you think about it, the math doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense. So if you have a hard question, please, I like hard questions. I, I like, I like a difficult question. I'm prepared for it. But I will meet you anytime, any day, so to get this, to get this project going. But I do not want it to die on the vine. I've got 1.75 million dollars invested in this project. It's a thirteen million dollar project. The group is prepared to do what it needs to do. The question becomes, do we want to sit on the outside of this? Or do we want to say, yeah, we were a part of this? I would hope that the, the, what, we'd want to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Your partner go. Your partner go.
I will share, I'll go for the baby then. I don't know if I have.
We didn't have to talk about all of that. Yeah. If you'll skip, I'll, I'll hit you up here to say, if you'll skip to section C under new business. I put together a resolution that was presented, uh, she presented this in the last meeting. It's, uh, Resolution 2509, the Black Lung Support Resolution. I, I just wanted to get that in front of you, use some time to, to take a look at that before taking any action on it. But you can, you can go ahead and speak to it. I just wanted to make sure they, they, they know this.
Hey, y'all. I, um, I'm pretty straightforward here. Um, I have come before y'all at your last meeting to talk about the issues around Black Lung, so I won't dive into that too much. I'm glad you have a question. I'm glad to answer them. Um, but I will say that. Um, but I will say that in the meantime, we have passed this resolution in Dickinson County as well. We've also passed it in almost 30 counties or local government municipalities in this time since we've started trying to push these resolutions forward. I also will say, well, I'm not asking you for anyone's, which I think is always great. I'm not, um, you know, I, I just want you to know that this will go into a body of work that we will then be able to present in our meetings with Senators Tim Kaine and Mark Warner and Marmie Griffin. And those folks have, um, supported this legislation historically and we believe that with the, with their support and the power of all these local governments combined, we may actually get some movement. So that's what I'm asking you tonight to be a part of. That's all I got. I don't have a bunch.
I'd like a motion to support black lawn benefit, Resolution 25 dash zero zero nine.
I'll say it.
Motion second, on paper.
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I will say the people in the county are really excited about it. I keep having run-ins with doctors because it's pretty close up. But thank y'all. And if you could send me a signed copy to my hand, y'all.
Yeah, you're just running, running up there and all.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. All right, y'all have a wonderful evening. Do you need more cop, y'all need more copies of this? All right, thank y'all. Thank you so much.
I'd sign it for all of you.
I'm sorry, I went back to get you. Yeah, well, I've, I've got. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get all that. We gotta get the seal on it and all of that stuff so that it's official. We'll get, I'll get that turd in the morning sometime.
Yeah, thank you so much.
For your recommendations, County Minister President.
I, I'm gonna apologize for this. I've got several items on my list. Um, the roof of the health department's been giving us some trouble for some time. I've been looking at this. I talked to a couple of companies about getting this roof replaced. I haven't gotten quotes as of yet. Excuse me, but the units that are on the roof on the health department, um, I thought they were heat pumps. They are not. They are split units. They have to stay in place. I wanted to get those units off that roof, but to, to give you an idea of what we're looking at for that small section roof, um, just moving those units off and putting them back on is gonna cost somewhere around $4,000. And there's not a way to, I actually even tried to get a look and see if there was a way to re-route the duct and maybe just put some heat pumps in there. And there's not a good solution for that. It wouldn't run into tens of thousands of dollars just for the air handling. So, uh, we are going to have to sometime in the fairly near future get a new roof on the health department. Uh, it's a small section, but it's not gonna be inexpensive just because of the size. Um, there is a CPMP meeting over at CS, at the SS Office for CSA on Thursday that I plan on attending. Um, we have a board-appointed person for that, but, uh, I, I'd ask the board if they would take a look at that to see if we could maybe get someone else, um, to, to do that. Um, I, I think what the deal is, they have those meetings at 9:00 in the morning through the week and it's just impossible for people to go. But I am gonna attend this one. Um, a lot of the new year stuff comes out, that sort of thing. So I, I think we need to have a representative there.
Say, we normally have a representative.
We're, we've, we have one appointed, um, and I think Mr. Kirklow is our appointee, but he's not able to attend those through the normal course of a business day. Is that, that, you're our appointee, aren't you?
Yes.
And, um, yeah, we may need to look at doing something different just to make sure we've got somebody at that meeting, but I ain't wanna go on Thursday. Um, we did get all of the deeds done through a property sale that we had over here for the Ag Building and, uh, the Head Start Building. We've been getting a little kickback from one of the, the property buyers that I think we're finally gonna get through all of the things to get that property finally, um, changed hands. I, I will, I'll keep you informed on that. Uh, there is an organization called KNLT that I give you a copy of, a email chain, um, that I've, I've been having some conversations with for a while. This group owns a bunch of property, um, that they're wanting to get, and Ms. Muntzey's not here tonight, but, uh, they're wanting to, uh, petition the board to have this designated as, um, non-taxable land. Um, they, uh, tap their effort to being, um, a biodiverse and climate resilient landscape, um, organization where they benefit several different species of, of creatures and for recreational use and, and they're just looking for that. And, and I was wondering if the board, kinda what they would want to do, and we can table this until later, but, uh, 'cause I didn't even talk to, to Ms. Muntzey about this, but, uh, uh, they're just looking to get this exemption for the taxes.
Pardon my, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
And pardon my expression, is this a bunch of tree huckers?
Um, I would say you probably could define them, if you wanted to, in, in that context, maybe.
Are they gonna fall into this conservancy that's bought up a bunch of land that we're getting nothing off of in the county?
I, I, I don't have an answer for that. That's the reason I needed a little more guidance.
They're, that group that owns 1% of the county property, we get nothing from them.
Yeah.
As far as I, am I right, D V?
Yeah.
And I can go ahead and give you a no vote right now. I can tell you it's a big no for me.
That, that's, I, I'm gonna be honest, that was kind of my thought because I, I've, I've been going back and forth with this group for a while. If you, you can kinda look at that email chain. I've, I've been talking to them, but, uh, I, you know, I, I didn't want to, to not take every opportunity to give them every opportunity to give me the information that I needed to do that, but I, I've not really got all of that yet, so. But they were, I will say this, uh, that group, um, in Kentucky, uh, has been classified as a private foundation within a 509A from the IRS, which makes them.
Tax exempt.
Tax exempt. Um, so they, they have been able to, to get a few things done, but, uh, it's just one of the things that I'm, uh, running through just, just kinda so you know that they're there, but I ain't gonna wait for doing any more on that until I get a little more guidance from, uh, from Ms. Muntzey. Do you have a question?
I would you need guidance when nobody's interested in this one?
Oh, nobody's interested in this?
Nobody.
I'm not.
I'd like a motion to deny.
I'm not interested in even long-eared bats in Virginia.
All the bats I can tell.
Okay.
We got bigger problems.
I, I, I fully understand. Okay, so I can, I can, I'll, I'll deal with that. And I can't find my piece of paper. Don't know what I did with it. Uh, I did hand, give you a handout that is for a Tassell County 911 frequency request. That frequency is extremely close to our, to our frequency. Um, let me give you a copy of that, huh?
Yes.
And, um, a little questionnaire stuff that was in that. So, um, I was gonna respond to that. That is more of an FM type band and they are fully committed to if they cause us any trouble at all, that they will, uh, they will cease using that frequency, uh, according to, to their agreement with, uh, with FAA and, and everything that they've got going on. So, um, I, I just kinda wanted to inform you of that, especially, uh, Mr. Flannery, about that request that was, that was hanging out there and if anybody had any concerns about that, to, to go ahead and fill that, that out and send it back.
Yeah, that frequency there, that's very, that's very close to our, uh.
Yeah, actually, I think it's exact. I'm not sure that it's not exactly the same frequency we're using.
155, 160, when we page on. And then, uh, I can't remember. There's a couple of channels the sheriff's office has on it, some type of channel.
Yeah. But they did say if we, if we got any interference from them at all, that they would cease and desist using that. So, uh, I, I thought that was a pretty fair request if they were, you know, if they were doing that. But there, I think what the deal is, is there are so many of those channels being used, you know, throughout the area that we were the biggest separation that they had because it is Tassell.
Yeah.
Uh, so as long as they're not throwing out a huge amount of, uh, power on that frequency, I think we'll be fine. I did the math on it real quick because I used to do some of that with radio and it, I think it'll be okay. I really think it'll be okay. Uh, but, uh, I, I, I'll go ahead and fill that out and send that back to them so that, uh, the, the one good thing about it is, is they, we have that commitment that they won't interfere with us.
Yeah, as long, I'll find ways, long as they don't, uh, most doesn't cause the interference, but does, they do what they say.
Yeah. Um, another thing we've got, if you remember last year, we looked at buying some lawn mowers for the, uh, public works. We have one mower that, the, the hydrostatic transmission is starting to go down in. Uh, we may end up needing to buy a lawn mower before this is over. Uh, it's, when it gets warm, uh, if you've ever had one of those, I've got one, but that had kinda the same problem personally, but it, we may end up having to look at buying a, a mower in the not distant future according to kinda how that one, uh, how that one survives. I did get, I mentioned it in the last meeting, we could, that received the, uh, grant that was in partnership of where we did a 50/50 sponsorship of the Pro Art. Uh, if, I would like to, because I, I asked Pro Art to send me an invoice that I haven't gotten, but I would like to request the board to go ahead and make a motion and to approve, uh, funding Pro Art, that 7,000 dollars that's in the budget so that I can get the money accepted for the grant and send them that information and get our money back from that grant. It's, it's already approved. The money's already sitting there waiting on us, but I, I just need to get that done if possible.
We had to make that motion. Second.
Motion second, on paper.
Aye.
Vote.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, right after I was first hired, one of the first things that I heard was the amount of phone lines that was being used in the building and all of those things. And I know it's been a little while since we've, since we've talked about that, but, uh, I, 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 that's never slipped me, okay? And that was a company called, I talked to several others. One company, it's actually called Spyglass. It's telecommunications. What they do is they analyze your usage of phones and number of lines you've got, any potential savings they've got that are out there. And, um, the way that they make their money is whatever savings that you realize over a 12-month period, you actually pay them half that. Um, and I, I did, I, I tried for a while to work with Verizon and, and, uh, and actually AT&amp;T both to look at line usage here, that sort of thing. They are really not forthcoming and you have to stay on them. And I asked them for all kinds of data that they will not give me and this, this company has a way to get that. So, uh, I wanna mention that there's any interest in, in entering into an agreement with a, with a company like Spyglass where they can take a look at our usage on all communication lines and, uh, look at a way to, to give us some potential savings even as far as going, uh, VOIP, which is voice-over IP and actually doing away with the phone lines altogether, which would require us to do a, um, a capital purchase of some phones. But, um, similar organizations, I think, have done this and shown a return on investment in about two and a half years. And, you know, so then, you know, after that two and a half years, you're actually saving money over what you were doing before. So, uh, I, I have had a little bit of conversation with them, enough to know that I believe that we can save some, some money. I, I'm not gonna say that, you know, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, but, you know, I, I think it would be in the tens of thousands of dollars for sure. And, uh, just, just by making, uh, some changes, but, but you have to have somebody on, on board with you to do that sort of thing.
Scott County, Hulfer, anything like that?
Not in this realm. I think it would, can tell you, you know, I can give you, you know, VOIP or whatever, but they, you know, they can't really tell you where you're at, what you can get rid of and what you can't. And we've gotta be real careful here because of the, the lines into 911 and, you know, the sheriff's office, that sort of thing. And then you've got the communications between the, the state as far as the court systems and, and all that. You gotta be real careful of what you do. And this company here actually has that experience or I wouldn't honestly deal, try to deal with them. Uh, I don't know how robust Scott County would be with that. I guess is my answer.
But it's something to look at.
I, I mean, I could ask them, I, I just.
I'd like to have their opinion on it.
Okay.
Cause they've invested a lot of money in our county.
But actually, you know, truthfully, probably by the time it was said and done, they would probably get Scott County more business with us in the long run, be their way whenever this thing worked out, to be, to be quite honest with it. So is it okay to move forward with this or you just have to put it off?
Well, I'd just like to get, I'd like to see, get Scott County's opinion on it. I'd like to hear what they say about it. They might advise you to do the same thing. But I'd just like to hear their.
Okay. I'll follow some of all this up. Uh, we did receive the radios back from Big to Gap for, um, where they shut their EMS service down. Mr. Flannery checked those out earlier. And, um, I mentioned to, I, I thank you all in the last meeting that the pump was down at the airport for the onboarding for the head gas. What happened with that pump was, uh, I don't know if we got a lightning strike, something happened, a relay stuck closed and turned that pump on and it ran dry for a while and burnt the motor up. I, I got a quote right before we got in here. The pump itself cost $4,727.76. That was the cheapest quote that I could find on a replacement pump. And that is expensive for the pump, but it does have to be a pump that doesn't explode. So those are, those are generally a little more expensive. Uh, that does not include installation powder. So, um, I was kinda needing to know what the board's feelings was toward replacing that pump. It has to be done if we're gonna continue to sell that gas.
Are, I know used to, are they trying to keep that fuel down so it would be, uh, more competitive for people to come here?
Yeah, actually, yeah, what I have been doing is not ordering until I can order a full load.
Well, I mean, keeping it priced. Oh, so you're saying doing that saves money?
It, it does. Yeah, if, if you're not paying for a less than triple rate when you buy the fuel, it saves you, it saves you money. So what, what I've been doing is, is the, the, the Airport Authority is doing a real good job right now of keeping up with that fuel. Uh, they're down there multiple times a week making sure that any water that is, um, condensated inside the, the tank is off and, you know, that sort of thing, which was part of the reason, you know, that we were getting these little short split loads and stuff. So the, the agreement that we've got is that they're working on that and they, they do a real good job. I will say that, um, actually, Jason and Jeff Rowley is a huge asset to that airport. But, you know, Jeff's down there lives real close and, and they're down there all the time doing, you know, small things. This was one of those things. Actually, Jeff caught the pump running dry like that and showed off, but it was too late. But yes, we are extremely competitive in the market.
Is there any kind, is there any kind of, uh, like a, a warning thing that can be attached to them?
I actually asked that question. I actually asked that question, I don't have an answer. What I was trying to find out is, is why we couldn't put a sensor on it if there wasn't any fuel running through the line, that it was there, but then the knee-jerk reaction, the response that I got from typing fuel was, is if you put something in there that is contact, your level would have static and that'd be good. So, we're, we're looking to see if there is anything available. I would estimate with that pump being 47, 30-ish and change, that installation on that and everything, you're probably looking at $6,500 to $7,000, probably about 100%, I don't know.
We're generating quite a bit of profit off that fuel though.
We do make money on fuel.
I'd make a motion to get it repaired.
Do you want to set a dollar limit on that, or just get it repaired?
We gotta get it repaired.
It does, and if we're not continuing to sell fuel, we have to get it repaired.
It'd do no good for it sitting down there.
How's that a motion?
Y'all got a motion in the second?
Okay, so that's gonna be a second. I guess I'm gonna be a third.
I'll favor.
I.
Vote.
That's all that I'll go after this, I do need, I do need to request that you go into closed session when we get done here to, for employment and investing in public funds real quick.
For personnel?
Personnel, public funds.
All right. Approval minutes, May 28th recess meeting, June 3rd recess meeting, June 12th recess meeting, June 17th regular meeting, June 18th recess meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Chair, if I may, real quick, you have no idea how hard Angie has worked on this stuff for all of those meetings and then trying to do all the BOE stuff and that sort of thing, and I, and I'll, I'll be honest, I think she needs to congratulate you for that, because this, that has been a daunting task.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Good motion, second, I'll favor. Vote. Free funds.
I was supposed to say one thing, I feel like we all have a public restroom.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the, the taxpayer's name that's, that's on there, I just don't really know that I want to make, that really, I guess it is public, but this person was awarded that 100% service-connected disability to the Veterans Administration and had paid their taxes, when they did get a partial refund, and that's, that is what this is doing, is trying to get that veteran their money back.
Motion, second.
Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. And Mr. Secretary of Department of Labor wants to have any issue?
Make the motion to pay. Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote.
Real quick, while we're in the approval of dispersals, you, you received a supplemental packet of dispersals, Angie handed out right before the meeting. If you don't care, what I would like to do is for you to take a look at those, and this is, it's standard stuff, but we weren't able to get it into the packet, and just as a point of order, I guess, since this wasn't made available prior to the meeting, if you take a look at that, I'd like to get a motion in a second to get these bills paid by themselves, if you wouldn't care. Copies of the invoices, everything, it's, it's waste management, the little west go planning.
Yeah. You want separated?
Well, I mean, you don't have to do each one of these, it's just because they weren't in the packet and some of the new rules that I had read, it would probably be cleaner since this wasn't in the packet to approve these, this dispersal of 171, 378, 57 by itself, just to make sure that we dot all our i's across our t's. That's just me wanting to be me.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. I mean, I'm an I.
I'm sorry.
You're an I for favor.
For, yeah. And then on the regular dispersals, dispersals, huh?
Yeah, you got that.
Okay, so you want to settle for this one?
Yeah.
And what was the total on that again? 171, 378, 57?
Yes, sir.
Okay, make a motion to.
I want we just.
A approval of dispersals for 171, 378, 57.
Yeah, he actually just did that. That's what he was doing, he just didn't, he just didn't read it out, so I, I think that'd be fine.
Okay.
I, I'm not even sure, to be honest, I'm not even sure that was necessary, I just wanted to make sure that we had that covered.
You had me confused.
I'm sorry.
New business. Board of directors.
And the past Jason's been in, he's been by point eight, I don't know, but I don't know if he still is, like, I don't know.
He's up here in 58 in Bryant's.
Yeah, that's, that's his address.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, but reappoint.
Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Sound appeals.
Make motion to the, re, re, reappoint.
Second. Is that how we're talking? Have you talked to him? Have you talked to him?
Me, he said no word to him, he didn't want to. What were you pulling, he has to get objectionable?
No, I just, I just didn't know if you talked to him.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Even kind of appeals.
I make a motion to table mine.
Second. Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Economic Development Authority.
I want to reappoint Ray Flaherty there.
Second. Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote.
I make a motion to the point AJ had made about.
I'll second. The motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Emergency management coordinator.
Make a motion to table. Second.
Motion, second, table, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Longtime office owner.
We don't actually have to appoint the Miley Stapleton there, and I've got a name for a new appointee on that, but I don't have address and contact information from him, and I have been trying to contact her for about a month now, because I, I think, did I give you her name at some point, I think, maybe I did, I might not have, but I, but I never got a contact information for them for us to do anything, so the, the Miley Stapleton will say, once a junior, once a senior, it's an appointment for two years, so we need to just table the Maya Edgera appointment.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Plant and Commission resignation.
Make a motion to table.
Real quick, just so you know, I talked to Clint about this earlier, we, no pressure, but we need to get somebody on that as quick as we can. We're not gonna have a forum real quick if we have to back that one right down, because what's gonna hap, there's a meeting tomorrow night, and we are real worried there's gonna be a forum for that. And that one tomorrow night, we're looking for.
You can say, but I got anybody in mind. That's our district, he's new here. Yes, but I may not.
I don't have any, I don't have, I, I just kind of found out today that this was, this was this kind of issue.
Are you going to, to it tomorrow?
I will be there tomorrow.
Should we find out a person, Angie, kick around, somebody, or somebody ready?
Yeah.
Is this going to affect?
Mine. He's got a motion on the board table.
I'll say. Can we do somebody tamper?
You could appoint somebody and if they turn to you, I don't know.
Okay, so we can prepare. Well, can any of us volunteer for one night?
That's inappropriate.
Oh, 'cause you have to like, end up voting for one where they.
Yeah.
I'm just trying. About you, what you being?
I don't think that would be appropriate either. I think we could readdress this, I mean, I, I assume if everything goes the way it goes up before we go into closed session, that we would take a recess and I could make the phone call or two.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll table this later on.
There is a motion on.
Motion to table.
Second. Well, I can withdraw it if we don't, if you're going house.
Oh, no, we're gonna get one. Yeah, yeah, we get one.
I'll just withdraw my motion.
Pete, would you be interested if it happened Saturday, tomorrow night? Please, it's real important.
We'll, we'll, we'll be with it.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll litter some out.
Do a P2, she's already on it. I guess we had to rip one or no. Okay, on that Miley Stapleton, I guess we have to reappoint.
Motion, second.
I already said.
Yeah, motion, yeah, motion, second, to table the Plant and Commission.
No, he withdrew.
Oh, he withdrew.
He withdrew, he withdrew his motion.
We have to drop two.
We'll resolve that, we'll get people.
Okay.
He, he withdrew his motion. The, as I understand, the appointment is for two years when you make the appointment, and what happened was, is that they missed a year, a year ago, right?
That's a problem.
Or two years ago, they missed an appointment, some, I don't know, somebody graduated early, I mean, I, I don't remember exactly what sort, somebody graduated school early and they were supposed to be the two-year appointment and then we were without, so then last year we had to appoint two people, but, so it is, yeah, so it was a one-year and a two-year appointment, that was how that, it was, that was a confusing, but again, that's what that was.
Southwest Virginia, 911, Kansas Committee, three votes.
Make a motion to reappoint Doc Twiggs. Make a motion to reappoint himself.
I'll make a motion to point Doc Twiggs and Josh Flannery.
Second.
Table, table the third one.
I'll second that.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Make a motion to, to research community, I make a motion to table that.
Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. Foodway Water Authority, I make a motion to reappoint Jordan Brummer.
Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
For Chair, your packet, there is a statement qualification for airport engineering from Delta Airport. You have to have a agreement with somebody for engineering for the airport if we decided to do a project of any kind. I did advertise, the only response that I got was from Delta Airport, and I need a, I need an approval of a motion to accept that proposal, that agreement is actually for three years for engineering services for Delta, and in it with it, you could automatically renew for two at the end of it. There's, you're not paying them any money unless you're actually doing a project that they're, they're available, and I would recommend them.
I'm gonna tell you. Second.
Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. I want, you can just pair back to the service board.
Yeah, actually, this was a funnel project, all of the 911 pad reback up, it's down there in that room, we have had our agreement with, actually, the manufacturer, which was Eaton with that company, there are a lot of, it's kind of called DC Group, that actually does that service too, they basically do the same PMs, they do the same service, their service people are actually, the, the one for here is located in the same exact place that the Eaton bunch is, the difference is, is their quote is about 60% to do that same service is what the manufacturer is. So, I, I got two quotes on, on that one, and I would like to have permission to enter an agreement with DC Group to do that service for us on 911.
What group?
DC Group.
DC Group.
Actually, it is a savings for the county to do it that way. If you do the agreement for, the agreement that we got, that we had, that we're coming out of with Eaton was a five-year agreement, and that five-year agreement was like $5,600 in that same, a year, that same agreement through DC is $3,000 a year.
I'll make a motion to go with DC Group.
I'll second.
I did check the references, because I was worried about it, to be honest with you. I mean, when somebody quotes you something and it's that much cheaper, you worry about it, but I checked the reference.
Got a motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote. That's all we have on the agenda.
All right, I'll make a motion to go into closed session, for all the personnel, 2.2-37181, and the best of the public funds, 2.2-37186.
Second. Motion, second, I'll favor.
I.
Vote.